Really presented to the city councils, you don't really know any of this. But we have a daily log that we fill out. All our information that we put out is written down on paper. A lot of different organizations, some organizations don't do these anymore. The sheriff's department, they have their own system that they generate their numbers. The state police has a separate system that they generate their numbers. We have a daily log that we write our contacts on or our runs. And we have four different things that we basically write down for our contacts. The first ones are what we label as officer runs. And these are any type of runs that we generate for ourselves. And this could be whether we're working stationary radar at the light or traffic enforcement. If we go to a business, we find a door open or something that doesn't look abnormal. Or we just find something around the city that...
Hold on, I'm sorry. Is there somebody out there coughing because it's really...
Yeah, yeah.
Yup.
It was in the cover.
Got you.
Okay, no, it's okay, it's okay. I'm gonna make this short and sweet.
Thank you, sir.
We also write down our telephone runs. Now typically, most of our runs are things that we generate ourselves. We do have a radio run, and that would be anything that's calling through central dispatch that would come over the radio. But we have our radio runs, we have our telephone runs, it would be people that call into the office. We have our officer runs that are self-generated. And also, we have our citizens run, our citizen runs. The one thing that I always found funny about working in Pecan Inn is, just like today when I was at the gas station, somebody stopped me and said, "Hey, I've been looking for you for a day," instead of calling. But we get a lot of people to flag us down about information, and they want to talk, so we write that down as a citizen run. We also log our, on our daily reports, any follow-up. And a good example would be of that is a break-in and entering that we had, that we might have to go around and make different contacts or do different things for that. We do write down our traffic stops, we write down the verbal warnings and also the citations that we issued. And also, any assists that we might have if we have a sheriff deputy or state police that is on a traffic stop and we back them up or we're doing some type of investigation. And we decided to back them up with that. So, I just want to go with that information with you really quick. And if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
On that though, would you, in the case somebody comes up with a question later, do you have a problem if anybody writes us, writes you, so you have it formally and you can write them back for an answer?
Oh, sure. Yeah, neither of these are questions, please. It's not that complicated, I just wanted to let you all know how we do that. And one thing I did want to mention, I did write in this article about our, some of our past year stats. And I think it's a good thing to point out, 2015, we had 1,999 calls or runs that we made. 2017, we had 21, 24. 2018, we had 21, 46. I think probably by the numbers that we have right now, going almost half of the year, we're probably gonna have more runs than that despite our not having as many people working. So, I think that's important to have that down there. So, if there's any questions, please feel free to contact me about it, or we'll go over that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Alex makes motion to approve the consent agenda as written with additions.
I would like to second the motion to approve the consent agenda as written with the additions.
All in favor?
No.
Any discussion? Oh, yeah, any discussion?
I would like to delete. Item A, two of the minutes. Okay. Or, I really don't want to get into it at the meeting, but last meeting was video recorded. It all should be on there, how things were presented, what was presented. I feel, I'm just gonna leave it there. I would like to review it with two other council people and make our decision on the minutes for the last month's meeting. And that's the only thing I'm disagreeing with is the approval of the minutes.
Did you make the motion? Did you make the motion to delete it?
I don't know if I have to. I don't know how I even go about it. I make a motion to have it deleted?
Well, no, we'd have to, we'd have to either approve or disapprove our motion now. And if it was carried through, then, no, then you wouldn't be able to go through, but then we could change it. Am I correct in saying that?
That would be a bond to answer that.
The way I understand it, if you disapprove the minutes, then we can't move forward because we have an open meeting from last time.
Okay. So, that would have to be on all the board though, whether we want to approve this or disapprove it. So, we go with the motion right now, as is?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're noted? Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to inform you that what I think, and I don't know Mr. Gibson, or council member Gibson's intention, but what I think is applicable here is that he would like to see a correction or revision on a certain item.
Okay.
I think you could do that without not approving the whole, or disapproving the whole minutes. If he would like to see a correction in the minutes, that's something the board can bode on without having to not adopt all of the minutes. But you'd have to entertain a motion to do the correction.
So, I make the motion to correct what I feel is a deficiency or...
You have to...
You'd have to notate where you think the correction needs to be.
And would they have to remove the motion that's currently on the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or second it.
It was seconded, it's seconded.
Sorry, then yeah, you would.
Somebody has to make a motion, take that, the last motion off the table.
Well, I'll make the motion to remove the consent agenda as it was written.
Are you asking for one line or the whole consent agenda?
Pardon?
Are you asking for just the minutes to be removed or the whole consent agenda to be removed?
Just the minutes, as I stated at the beginning. Item A, the minutes.
So, could we make the motion? Until the, it's reviewed by council member Gibson? I don't know.
That's not what I asked. I asked that it be reviewed by three council people.
Sorry.
Well, you can revise right now, but you can't, I mean, we'd all have to agree to revise it right now, okay?
All I want, that's the thing is to revise item A, approval of the minutes. Nothing else on the agenda.
Do you, okay. We have to remove our last motion.
I thought, I thought that's what I did, but I evidently did it wrong. So, how do I state it? I was trying to remove what was said at the very, very beginning of the motion. I was trying to remove that original one that was said and second.
Jason, I would refer you to Robert's Rules of Order. I believe at this time, you would...
Yeah, my folks are up here.
Oh.
It's gone.
Let me, on your desk?
Jason, I think the process, the original motion has to be rescinded.
Right, that's what, that's what, that's my...
So, who made the original motion?
Has to rescind the motion.
And then you move on to addressing your issue.
Yes. You're gonna rescind or amend something previously adopted?
I'll make a motion to disregard the last motion.
Rescind.
Rescind?
Rescind.
Rescind the last motion that was made. Yes.
I'll support the motion to rescind the second motion?
The last.
The last motion to...
Disregard.
Disregard. No, no, rescind.
Right, rescind. Does the person that originally made the motion has to rescind it?
Sorry. I will make a motion to rescind approval of the consent agenda or item A, rescind the last motion. I will support the rescind of the last motion.
Okay, we have a motion to rescind the last motion and support for it. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion. We should just, now we rescind it and then we can go back and we can correct anything we want to correct.
Go ahead with your vote after discussion and then you can entertain your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now... Make your motion.
I make the motion to remove item A of the consent agenda, the minutes.
We wanted to change them, we have discussion to change.
We're done.
We have to amend the minutes.
I want to make a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay?
I'll support or second the motion to amend the minutes of the June 17th meeting.
Okay. Discussion.
I just, as I stated, since we've started a video recorder meeting, I would like myself and two council people to review the minutes.
No, it has to be amended today, or else we cannot go forward with our meeting. You're amending it right now, that's what you're doing, you're amending it right now. That's what we're having discussion about.
Okay, then I'll just say, there was a lot said at the last meeting about the dog, about different things, that is not currently in these minutes. That I feel should be in the minutes because it would be a true copy of the minutes. And I also have a problem in the committees.
One amendment at a time, we're amending it, okay? You have, you stated you wanted, you made a motion for amendment, okay? You have to show us the line or where you want to put in to change the minutes now. You have to do this correctly in exact spots. Okay, so do one step at a time.
Okay. Committee report. It's stated here, we talked about the Cheese Town Festival. How it went, what a great job and everything that happened. But yet it states here, Councilman Gibson questioned the format. Was, why was it changed? And is argumentative regarding city managers presenting the services, city services and not the chairperson. Mayor Brazo states he approved and consolidated the format agenda. Okay? Councilman Gibson was not argumentative when asking questions and the facts and wanting an answer. That's my first one.
Okay, stop, stop there. Okay, what do you, what are you amending, amending it to? If that's what we're asking, that, this is where you have to change the wording.
I would like, Councilman Gibson questioned why format was changed. Regarding the city manager, yes, presenting city... Present, presenting city services and not a chairperson. That's what I would like to...
Okay.
Councilman Gibson was not argumentative, asking the questions at that meeting.
Okay. So, one at a time, or? Oh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna amend it all at one time, so it, it's, you know, do both your amendments.
So, keep on going.
Yes, what you're stating, yes.
Okay. Public safety. Again, I'll just read the whole thing to make that sense for the residents. Sergeant Spencer reports good weekend with Cheese Town. Great parade, festival and fireworks. Great parade, festival and fireworks. Councilman Corr question why police status report not in packets. Sergeant Spencer explains stats compute, consumes minimal of two to four hours to prepare, taking time away from patrolling. City manager approved with mayor's consent to no longer provide in packets. Councilman Gibson becomes argumentative disputing why he's not. And I don't believe I said he's not, I believe why council is not informed of these issues. So, I would like it to change, city manager approved with mayor's consent to no longer providing the packet. And Councilman Gibson was asking the information of why it was changed, not being argumentative.
Also, I do have some more information if we want to right now too. A formal motion to approve minutes of a previously held meeting is usually not necessary. Approval can be handled, be handled by unanimous consent. Minutes of a meeting can be corrected even after they've been formally approved.
So, what you're saying?
So, we can still correct these, these minutes.
Oh, we're already in that phase of it, huh?
Yeah.
So, is that your motion, Joe? To remove the words argumentative of minutes?
Well, I have other things that was left out.
Well, we can table this for next meeting and correct them.
That's fine. I, I just, my motion is, my motion was, yes. Councilman Gibson is not argumentative when he sits up here. Council Gibson was elected to this position to represent the residents of this city. And that's what I'm doing in a whole, is representing my representatives, residents. So, when I sit up here and ask questions and look for facts, that's what I'm looking for, nothing more. And to be rode up as the bad person sitting up here, no, I disagree with that.
I say we table this, get it corrected later, approve the consent agenda and we will, we will, we will look at the minutes after.
Aye.
Okay?
Yeah.
Well, he had a motion on the floor, I hope he supported it.
And she supported it, so now...
You gotta rescind it.
Now, you have to rescind, now you have to go back and start again, we'll rescind it.
Then you make a motion to approve the consent agenda without the minutes being approved.
I make a motion to rescind the last motion.
Oh, I support the motion to rescind the last motion.
Okay. We have a motion to rescind the last motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need a motion.
To amend, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend item A of the minutes.
Of the consent agenda. You would like...
To approve the consent agenda without...
Without item A.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda without item A.
I'll second the motion. Oh, you want me to keep like...
Yeah, we gotta say it all.
To, what'd you say? I'm sorry, I lost.
To prove the agenda without item A.
To prove the agenda without item, item A, the minutes.
All in favor? Oh, yeah, for further discussion, any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda except for A? All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? All right. So, the minutes will be tabled and looked at. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Okay. I believe you have my city manager report as included in the packet. I do have some additions, but before we go on to that, is there any questions for me as regarding that city manager report? So...
Don't I just add one question on the city manager report, sorry?
No, that's fine.
The priority of paving the streets that you have highlighted there, was that in quest of some residents or was it, this inventory of our worst streets?
That was my inventory as to what streets are in the worst condition and also most used or most traveled. Except for Glenview Court, that was asked by Mr. Hornacek because he was willing to cover some of that cost.
You haven't heard anything back from the vendors?
I still have not.
All right, can you?
Yep, you're welcome.
And we've called several people, I know, I know we're not getting any return phone calls.
I do have a name someone gave me that I will follow up with this week to see if they would, I don't know if the project's gonna be too big for them or not, but we'll follow up, so. Just some updates on Friday, well, last week, I believe it was last week or the latter part of the week before. As you know, we received a grant to do handicap accessible playground equipment from the Northern Bay Fund. We came in receipt of the wheelchair swing. The gentleman put it together, went to put it up there. The cement pad that is currently there is not functional for that swing. The size is pretty skim, close to what that needs. And if it was set there right now, it would swing out into the pedestrian walkway. So, we are looking at basically flipping that pad... So we are looking at basically flipping that pad to the other side. The gentleman we're in again today, we were discussing our options. We feel the company that makes it does not recommend having the cement pad put there, but in all honesty, I don't know what else we would do because it, we need to make it wheelchair friendly for them to get to that swing, and if we put rubber mulch down, you're not gonna be able to push a wheelchair through there. Sand still is gonna be a little cumbersome to push, um, so we are still working on ideas for that. The best that we've come up with to, for, through today was to pour a cement pad and then put like rubber mats or something down that would soften that blow. But we are working on that. While we were out there looking at that last Friday, um, we were made aware of people using the playground equipment, that the one farther north between the, right there by the twisty slide, there's like a little bridge, and there was a crack in that that was pliable enough that if a child stepped on it, their foot could go through and get caught. It wouldn't go all the way through, but still it would create, you know, painful situation and danger a child. So again, we bought rubber padding. I was on the phone today with Miracle Playground to try and get the part ordered, so they asked that we send a picture, so I'll be doing that tomorrow. And while we were there, we inspected other aspects of the playground, and some of the seats need to be replaced, so I also got pricing on that, so that'll be done. I know Brian has asked for the F and P going forward when we get that date set, that he wants to review chain of command. I would just remind everyone that if you have an issue with employees, please come to me. I've always said I have an open door. You can call at any time and make an appointment to see me. If you need to just stop in for five minutes, that's fine, but if you feel you need a longer amount of time, please call. Okay? It is a serious matter if I have people directing staff. They need to take their direction from one person. I did contact the attorney on, on our chain of command and what should be done, and he shared with me that if it becomes a problem, that it goes to the police department, who then forwards the issue on to the attorney, and then he takes it to court. If a council member is convicted of directing employees in court, that is removal from office. So just, please, let's all, you know, share information. If you have a problem, please come to me. And then I am going to ask for your direction as to what you want to do with the dog, because it was people from council approached me on the dog, and I have, I was honest, I believe with everyone, I have no issue, but if council has an issue, again, you direct me as a whole, so if you have an issue, please let me know if you want the dog here or not.
I, I think there's positives, both, there's both positives.
Right, there is, and there's always gonna be that to each side, I'm not saying, but I wanna do what council wants me to do.
I think before we can go any further with it, we need to have proper information on all of it.
Yep.
I think, and, you know, maybe Ken Lynn coming in and discussing insurance and stuff and everything with us, I think maybe that would make everybody feel more comfortable and understanding about what's going on. And, and I, and I think that's the approach we should take with it.
And, and that's fine, but like I said, I just...
I don't know how everybody else feels, I mean, if she's, she's asking right now, I think...
Well, I agree that we, we're not informed enough to make a decision.
And I understand that. I'm just saying, please remember that you all direct me as a whole, not as individuals, and you need to share, and Jason and Brian both have done very well in that you do need to give me goals. I work for you.
Right.
I can interpret what your goals are without you telling me directly.
Right.
So I'm not saying that I don't know how to do my job or what to do, but I don't always know what you want out of me.
And that is correct, and I think everybody got an email from me that, you know...
Yes, I appreciate that.
At next meeting, we're gonna have, we're gonna have goal setting forward at their next meeting. We're gonna come up with something that we can all, and, and our citizens can look at us and say, yay, they're doing a good job, or no, we need to, we need to see some, someone work on this other areas.
Yep.
You know?
And before...
And I, and I think that's good for everybody, not, you know, it's good for our citizens and good for us.
Correct, because we're not gonna get anywhere without good, open communication, both ways. So, yes. Um, before I forget, I did wanna share with you that Mr. Thompson was in and gave me the condemnation process to get started with Mr. O'Letts Building, in case you hadn't noticed, that is losing blocks and everything, so that is on to the attorney.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Dawn? Okay, moving on to city services. Finance and personnel.
We have nothing to report. We do have a meeting set for July 30th at 10:00 a.m. for the F and P to cover a range of topics. So we'll have a report for next month. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Public safety?
Well, a couple of quick things. One of the things we worked on a lot last month was our light. We've, uh, we did a sweep of the entire city, every single street. We've made contact with, uh, and what we're focusing on was the light vehicles, the vehicles, no plates, no insurance. Uh, there are obvi, obviously mechanical issues with them. We probably made contact in ninety-nine percent of the people. Uh, everybody's been very compliant, uh, some thanking us because they had partners that had vehicles they didn't want in the yard anymore. Um, so that went very well, and, and we got a couple people that asked for extensions, and we're more than happy to provide that to them, because obviously we don't lock the site anyone. Um, so that's going very well, and when we get done with that, uh, I'm sure the city director, the city manager will direct us on the next phase, but it's, it's going pretty well. Um, one thing I did wanna mention, and I mentioned it before, is August 2nd, we'll be having the B fit down at Boise Hills Club. Sure the mayor's excited to be in the dump tank again, won't he?
You didn't know you were volunteered.
It looked like a yes to me. I had the opportunity, uh, I was asked to go on the Arrow Show a few weeks ago with county executive Jim Barsha, and we talked about some local issues with the opioid problem and heroin and such, like, uh, it was a, I thought it was very important to the community. Talking about communication, uh, I had a, I had a nice couple hour long conversation with the sheriff. I invited him up here because of some of the, um, let's just say rumors that were going out in the community about he said, she said type of things. Uh, we sat down and talked about a lot of them, um, and, uh, at the end of the conversation, the city manager came in and, and we discovered there was no issues the sheriff had with us, and we don't have any issues with him, so, um, I was very thankful that he took the time, and he was busy, uh, to come over and talk to us, and, and it was a very positive conversation, so. And also, lastly, uh, I know that we've had, um, some issues with manpower, um, with our local fire department, which is not something that's just, uh, uh, in this area, all, all around the country, they've been having issues with volunteers. And, uh, I've talked to Chief Ramsey quite a bit over, over the years, and we try to share information to help him get volunteers on the community. One of the things that I did in the past when I was in the Navy is everybody that's on ship has to have a, uh, has to be able to do firefighter activities, so, um, something I'm a little bit familiar with. I did have one conversation with Mr. Ramsey and also the city manager, and with her approval, I'm gonna be putting an application into the fire department, and I'm hoping that after I get the certifications that they have, that that will be a benefit to our community. Obviously, we have a lot of the medical calls that are going out in the daytime when I'm working, and also Officer Viviana was expressed interested in it as well. Um, so we're hoping that with the both of us joining the fire department, um, that will give us some additional support and coverage that they probably will need, so. Any questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I just have one, one question of the mayor and council on the matter of, uh, public safety reports. Who, Sherry, the chairman of this committee?
Yes.
Yes.
And I guess from this point, I, I, I have a problem not getting the monthly reports, police reports like we, we established in the past, because that's a way of us as a council members to keep track of, of the statistics of the department, how productive it is, um, patrol time, patrolling hours, our residents want to see presence on the streets, they made that known in many meetings in the past. And it's hard, hard for us to just see this without report. It's like not getting the accounting report every month on all, all the finances that are going to the city. You know, police department is an important department for the city, um, but we have to make sure that we have the proper stats going forward. And the excuse we got at the last meeting or two meetings ago, that you don't have the time to do it, I, I see that as not a good answer. If you have time to go on Facebook and post all the time, go and do these meetings, somebody in the administration has time to put this report together monthly, so. So from, from that aspect...
I, I would say if all the, the council agrees, if somebody wanted to do a motion, I mean, we could make that happen.
I'll make, I'll make that motion, uh, reestablish the, um, police activities report, and, uh, the chairman of the, of the, uh, public safety committee chairs the reports monthly, and if, uh, we ask for the officer's input on the report, that no problem giving presentation at the same time, but you should be, the chair should be initiating the conversation monthly. That is my motion.
That's all I have.
I'll second the motion of getting the public safety report back in. With councilwoman Bettrick?
Committee chair.
Committee chair.
Overseeing.
Overseeing.
So we have a motion and we have support for, uh, bringing back the reports, the police reports with, uh, our chairperson overseeing that.
I guess I just would like clarification, um, Sergeant Spencer, and that's fine, we'll do the report, um, he just submits it for the packet. Again, as we, as I shared in that city manager report when we did our research, unless there was a committee meeting called for public safety, Sherry wouldn't have anything to report on. It's up to, it would be up to Sergeant Spencer to give you those stats, and it's not an issue, I'm just, I would like that clarified because unless council or chairman has a meeting, there's nothing to be reported.
Well, the motion is we get to report monthly, but like we used to, such as...
Right, I'm just saying I don't know that we need to have...
But we don't have a Parks and Recreation meeting every month, but we have chairman or councilmember Saha reporting, excuse me, reporting on anything, so, you know, nothing to report at this time usually, but...
Right, and that's all I'm saying, unless you have a committee meeting, there's nothing to report.
But they have a whole month of activity that should be, I would personally like to see myself.
No, I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm being, I think we're having a lack of communication. You would still have the report, I'm just saying Sherry's not...
Right, if she doesn't have a meeting, then she says nothing to report.
Report, you're, you're...
We will still have that to visually see.
Other than the reason to report, so...
Again, she wouldn't present the report Sergeant Spencer would.
Right, right.
But it would still be in our packets.
Yes, yes.
And if we ask for a question, then we have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I agree, I'm just...
All right, so we, any more discussion on that? We do have a motion and support for it. Would that be a roll call? Would you like a roll call, Lord? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so we're gonna bring back the reports.
And if I may?
Yeah.
Um, and just, uh, I don't think the, uh, Mr. Sahai, I don't think the, I don't think the words came out of my mouth, I didn't have time. They're just, you know, the thing I guess I would like you to understand is, um, when I talked about them statistics, um, the former chief, Chief Ober, he hasn't been on the road seven, eight years. Our stats have continually went up over the years. I can do the report, I have a problem doing that.
No, you, you didn't find a report up to the point where somebody voted on it.
And the reason, well, no, I, I brought it to the city manager because it is time consuming. Um, and I don't know if we've had a question about the report in the last six or seven years, except for, uh, maybe how many miles we had in Congress, which isn't really relevant, but, um, but the reason why we didn't do the report is because I asked her, and she said it was okay. I don't have any problem doing the report. All I'm saying is, is we're, uh, we used to have someone in the office that did all these things. The calls haven't went away.
Right.
Now that we don't have somebody in the office, so just, it's, but that's fine, I have no problem doing it, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Parks and Recreation.
I have nothing to report other than we should get a, I would like to get a, at least a meeting, uh, recreation meeting together, um, just to go over some items at the park and different projects out there that we authorize. I haven't seen the activity on, and they may start, or, um, so, just like to get a, a meeting together on those on the committee. So back then.
I think it's...
Yeah. So if we can get coordinated, uh, with Yvonne Self, we'll give one next, before the next council meeting. So all that, Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Moving on to Downtown Development Authority.
We have nothing to report on that, our meeting got delayed, so we're meeting a week from Tuesday.
Okay.
At 2:00 p.m., correct? Just so everyone knows.
Okay, moving on to ordinances? Chairman Gibson?
Last meeting, I asked council to review a few ordinances to see if we wanna repeal at least a few of them up here at the top, so, uh, do we have a discussion before, or...
Well, and I think those are all, really a lot of those you had on, I thought a lot of them were just no breakers. A lot of them just need to be taken out, and I think, and I know, um, Dawn has some that she wants, we have to look over and, and going forward. Um, this all goes to, you know, I really need to see the planning commission also have a meeting at zoning boards, too, so we can start working on some of these other areas that pertain to our ordinances and our, uh, you know, our master plan, these, these all are important, so, um, we will, I will talk to her how we wanna remove some of those here going forward after this meeting. We'll discuss on how we wanna, we wanna go about, like, this easiest way of going about getting rid of some of these, or how we have to do it, so I, I'd like to have more information myself going forward before I go ahead and do some, some of them. Yeah?
Nothing more, so then?
That's a good start, so we have a good start on, on getting some of our ordinances cleaned up. Anybody have any other questions about that? Okay, moving on to fire and Northern Bay ambulance, we have not had a meeting, so there's nothing there. Well, our next meeting is next week?
We were supposed to have one tomorrow evening.
But it got moved to the following week.
The twenty-fourth.
Yep, correct.
Would that, tomorrow being Tuesday would be, would that be the twenty third again on a Tuesday? They're generally on a Wednesday, aren't they? So, okay, sorry, so seven twenty four.
Yep, correct.
And are they at six P M.?
Six, six thirty.
Six thirty, sorry.
I always make it there at six, but I forget they're at six thirty.
And if you want the N B A, it'll be August sixth at six o'clock here.
Thank you, because that is before our next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Alright, moving on, we have no unfinished business at this time, I don't think. So, new business, a determined cost of park rental for vendor show requested by Kathy Kizarski. So, what I did, uh, is, just to start us off on that conversation. What I came up with is I went through everything that there was in the park and I kinda added it all up together. It was two hundred and eighty bucks, I rounded off to three hundred dollars for the whole park. Um, she'll have use for that for a whole day, which is eight hours. So that would be for an eight hour day, it would be a three hundred dollar charge. And I think that's probably. Pretty common to most places, I, I, I would say for a park, that's probably a good deal, but um, what's everybody else's? And that, that includes, she has to, she has to have some form of insurance and, and, and such too, correct?
Correct.
And, and if she had water, we could do additional costs if she needed water for some reason, but I.
She did not ask for water or electricity.
She's looking at two days.
In two days, so, you know, I suggested three hundred dollars a day. Um, I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
What, what is the show for?
It's a, um.
She wants to run it to host the craft shows, so she would be charging the people that are bringing their crafts. That's why the mayor's asking what we would charge her because, and then I guess I would just caution you. As to while you're thinking about this. You would, I guess you would almost need like a security deposit because if she's setting up, you, she really should have been here to do Q and A with you.
Right, correct.
Because we don't know exactly her intentions, she just sent you a simple letter, I think it was like two sentences. We don't know if she was wanting to use the parking lot, which then incurs problems on weekends when kids are out there to play, for families to park and that. Then if not the parking lot, is she expecting the grassy areas, are we gonna have ruts? You know, are, how many cars are gonna be dri- I mean, these are just things that you have to think of.
And when is this taking place?
Uh, September fourteenth and fifteenth or September twenty first and twenty second.
You know, and then, you know, we're gonna, and I, I, that is a, a good, good thought process there because I would probably say you would probably. If they're gonna be there for two days, that's six hundred dollars, then you have a six hundred dollar deposit and six hundred dollar rental with, you know, no damages than the.
Like a security deposit?
Yeah, a security deposit of six hundred dollars and, and then rental of six hundred dollars for the two days. That would be my suggestion.
I, I mean, this is totally your decision, I'm just trying to give you some things to think about.
I think it would be probably good for the community, probably bring some revenue in for the other businesses, so, you know, whenever there's people in town, it's always good.
Does it separate from the one she's doing at Town and Country? Do you know where she, it's the same lady, right?
Is it? I thought, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
I believe it's the same.
Is it, yeah.
Cause I thought Lee and Winley handled it.
No, she got out of it, this, this was her first year not doing it, so I believe this is the same lady that's doing it at Town and Country, so.
Okay.
Is she gonna take away from that one, bring it, I mean.
I, this is, I, I can't, I, I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about.
Right, no, I'm not either, but there's a big, that's a big event, which is great to have it right at that park, but damages and.
Right, that's, you know.
Let them stay out there in big motorhomes.
Did we, we, we had a, um, I thought I saw somewhere a policy established for rentals at the park, pavilion rentals and. Thought I came across that somewhere.
We did have.
This is where I came up with the idea.
Cause we've never set up, that's why it's come to council. If it's just the pavilion that they want to rent or exzebo, we handle that.
But something that's all encompassing of the park, that's when we bring it to council because we don't have that authority, only you do.
And is she the only one staying with her motorhome or is there multiple?
She's not here to ans- to answer that, I cannot answer that for you.
I'd have to say we have to take.
Well, the dates are.
September fourteen, fifteen, twenty first and twenty second, four.
I think really she needs to probably come in and explain, or, or have a better explanation in writing so we can vote on it. For their, for, and actually going forward have something if other people wanna do this. I, I don't think this is just based on her, we should have something moving forward for the whole park.
Okay.
I agree.
Did she say there was a deadline, you know, for promoting it and getting the vendors out there on her note or anything?
She said she was trying to determine it, but was something she wanted to do based on cost.
Probably throw out the cost, I, I personally have no problem with that cost, but. I'm just thinking that she's trying to get vendors there anymore.
Right, they need notice, correct.
You know, I would say we probably should do something today, but in the future, just have something on, on works that people want the whole part to. You know, just, so, we're not here talking about it, again, next time it's already, we got something already completed on paper.
So, this would probably be something that Brian would wanna add to finance and personnel, like a questionnaire for larger park rental.
Yeah.
Yeah. Either committee, either committee.
Right, or parks and rec- correct, either way.
Uh, would you like us to, would you like a motion for this, so we have, have something or?
As far as the value, yes.
Well, I mean, it was addressed in the consent agenda for them to do a sleepover, we need to put that in there. It's allowable and where.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but for now, we're just gonna do a cost and then moving forward, we can have an actual parks and recreation meeting on it. Moving forward, how we wanna go about, so it's done for the future.
Well, in all actuality, you've already given her permission to stay overnight at the last council meeting when you adopted that. But we never discussed a cost.
Right, so we gotta, let's do the cost. Seven, parks and reformation, brick, recreation, meeting, meeting. And we can, then we can get everything, so we don't have to keep coming back to her. So she's got something in front of her that she already knows what to do.
Well, you could, right now you could do, do a motion, you know, based on improvement of costs and providing um. Certificate insurance showing liability.
Right, that's.
Insurance.
That's correct.
We could establish that right now, so at least she can move forward and.
Yes, correct, that's what I, that's what I'm saying.
So I'll make that motion to approve. A fee to use the city park uh per diem of three hundred dollars per day. And that the person renting it would provide um certificate insurance and naming the city as additionally insured uh for.
And security deposit.
Plus the, what was it? Do you want to? Three hundred dollars half, half, yeah, three hundred dollars security.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Well, per day.
Or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Per day.
Okay.
So let's go.
I second, you know, if I can remember. I'll second the motion to approve. The vendors at three hundred dollars a day for approval. I don't know what it would.
With insurance.
With insurance.
Certificate of insurance.
Certificate of insurance.
And a three hundred dollar a day deposit.
And a three hundred dollar a day deposit.
Okay, so we have a motion and support for the vendors to use the park. For three hundred dollars per day with, including certificate of insurance and a three hundred dollar a day deposit. Would you like a roll call, roll call, roll? Roll call vote or just?
Councilmember Coyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, moving on to B, repeal ordinance four oh two A, animal law ordinance and replace with four oh two B. Clean nineteen zero seven one five, animal regulation.
Second question was four oh two A, and then replace it with four oh two B.
I would like to make a motion to approve the repeal ordinance four oh two A, animal law ordinance and replace it with four oh two B. Dash two thousand nineteen zero seven one five, animal, animal regulation ordinance as introduced at the city encumeralment meeting, held this evening.
I'll second the motion to repeal the ordinance four oh two A to the animal law ordinance and replace it with four oh two B dash two zero one nine. Zero seven one five, animal regulation.
Any discussion? Okay, cause we have, we have a motion. And support for the repeal of ordinance four oh two A, animal law ordinance and replace it with four oh two B, twenty nineteen zero seven one five, animal regulation. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Coyer?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
Yes.
Um, moving on to budget amendment.
That's a discussion point on this. Dawn, if you, if you can just explain the um request for the transfer off to the water and sewer. We're talking about balancing this fiscal, the past fiscal year, correct?
That was the audit adjustment made by the auditors for the prior years that water sewer has run negative.
So the request for the two hundred twenty two thousand six three six ninety seven, is that, that figure?
Correct. And I don't know if you have questions or if you want me to just kinda go over it. So I broke it down, these were. So, when you have your revenue expenditure, your bottom lines cannot end up in a negative. If they are, then we have to do a budget amendment. Now throughout the year, there are um transfers that are done. From streets because we can, when the gentlemen go out and do street work, whether it's snow plowing. If we have water main or sewer issues where we have to break into the streets, we obviously can't. Transfer that cost from the streets to, but in order to repair those, because of those breaks, we can capture that cost. So there are transfers that happen, we had to wait until the end of June so we can get the last batch, cause they're usually done in quarters. Um, there are times that costs exceed what we've budgeted, as you can see here. Um, some things are just cleaned up because um we have contributions and donations, so again. You have areas where we have expenses that need to be cleaned up and we have revenues that exceeded what we budgeted. So like on the left-hand side of the front page, on tax revenue, we had two hundred and eighty thousand budgeted as revenue. We actually ended up collecting three hundred and thirty nine thousand six ninety five and seventy cents. So we need to do a amendment so that I can change that in the system. As well as our local community stabilization and miscellaneous income that we received. In the form of, we actually got money from the state to replace some of that personal property tax that we lost. So that's where that is. Um, so with those. Changes there, we need to, to offset those expenses, we need to do a transfer in a fund balance of one hundred and forty three thousand two hundred and two dollars and fifty six cents. And as you can see, we actually, if we went and had that transfer out to water and sewer, we would have gained revenue this year. But because we had that, you, the reason I say that is because otherwise that transfer in fund balance would have had to been the two twenty two. So that's the only reason we even have to tap our fund balances is because of that water and sewer. And as I told Jason earlier, a lot of times we have to wait, I, we can do these as they come along. Um. But June always, you have bills that are coming in and you don't know until the end of June exactly where you're gonna fall. So that's why we're doing it at this time. And like I said, when the um auditors come in. Those numbers on your revenue expenditure can even change after the auditor adjustments. Because like a lot of times, um, right now, we have things that were built or received in June. That we don't receive the bills until after that the auditor puts back, because July and August, we can put expenses back to previous fiscal year. The same way, um, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, same way is that we receive revenue sometimes into, like right now, we're into June billing. The June water bills went out, we're collecting that revenue in July. And when the auditor comes in, he's going to move that revenue that we got in July of twenty eighteen back to June of twenty eighteen. So there's a lot of juggling that will happen. So I just want you to understand that these numbers that I'm giving you here are fine. But if you looked at the revenue expenditure after the audit, it's gonna be different than what it is today. And in streets, we're allowed to capture the guy's labor as well as any machinery that they use.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second the motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
We have a motion and support to accept the budget, budget amendments as presented. Roll call.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Coyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
Yes.
Alright, god damn. Alright, moving on to public.
Public comment?
Thank you. Well, Chris Key with from Pines. First of all, as promised, I would like to thank city manager Dawn. I thanked her when she fixed the, the problem with the shop. Came and thanked her, but I told her I'd make sure she got thanked in public record because. She has put up with probably me coming in like four or five hundred times, asking this question, asking that question and what about this, what about that? She's helped me out. Every single time, hasn't thrown me out yet, so I figure I'm doing pretty good. Um, issues I had with her holding two positions, went through the city charter. And whether, you know, I don't like it anymore than I did before, but found out that yes, she can hold more than. So I still have a complaint, but, you know, I really can't do much about it because the city charter says it's good, so. And then there was an issue with an employee, city employee being fired. And the thing is, is last I knew, last, last, left, left the last meeting, the issue hadn't been voted on, and according to the city charter, she has the right to fire, but with the city it comes approval. And if you don't hold on it, how do we know whether you guys approve it or disapprove it? And then it just, to me, the reason I brought up the shut-off fight was because that left open the lawsuit. If you don't do this properly, this could be open to lawsuit and you guys got so many problems to deal with, you guys don't need to be dealing with the lawsuits every time you turn around. And that's my only main concern about bringing it up because you guys have done, everything I brought up, you guys have taken care of. And, you know, and like I told Dawn before, here are my number. If the city needs me to volunteer for anything that I'm capable of, I'll be more than happy to do it, just give me a phone call. And thank you for your time, you guys, thanks again for the job you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson? I remind everybody, we get, uh, there's five minutes too.
First of all, I'd like to make a comment on, at the last, last council meeting that we actually brought up above resident having issues and I wasn't doing my job. I'm here to repeat that. First of all, the building department did not issue permits to roof it up. Consider maintenance. Okay, once you hire somebody, it is your problem to see that you hired either a licensed contractor or somebody. There's nothing I can do for you, if you file a complaint, the state is gonna throw it out because you hired the person. They're not gonna back you up. If you want the building department to stand behind you, you have to have a contractor pull a permit, which we don't issue permits because by the time I get there, you're done with the job, I didn't see what you were putting there, so. That being said, that's why that one was handled that way. Secondly, all complaints to be legal have to be in writing, signed, and dated. It, it's very confusing because I get into a lot of he said, she said, neighbor complaints, da-da-da, boundary lines, water issues. My policy now is when I get a complaint, I tell the person, you will put it in writing, sign it, date it, send it to the city manager. Then if you folks wanna pursue this, then I will go back and I will address the issue. But some things aren't code issue, they're ordinance issues and things like that, so that'll expedite that. Thirdly, um, losing my train of thought here. The, the issue with the roofing, um, like I say, that, that's something that doesn't come under my purview. There, there's nothing I can do about it. So just so city council knows, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do for the city. I will go out and post any building that I get direction from Dawn that she wants posted. That being said, I no longer have any jurisdiction over that issue. There's nothing else I can do. Once I post it, it goes automatically to the city manager. Now it falls in your guy's lap whether you wanna pursue it or not. You don't wanna pursue it and it ends up with some liability issue, that's for the city to address. There's, like I say, once I post it, I have no further say. So that's why I try to get with Dawn kinda ahead of these to see if you wanna pursue them, but we've got three that are posted now that are serious issues and the problem boils down to your revenue. It's well-known fact, none of these cities, townships, whatever, can address a lot of these issues, you do not have the funds. So I guess what I'm saying, I wanna turn it to Dawn and if she feels like they should address it, then that's up to her and council. But some of them are pretty serious, um, I don't know, liability issues, that's a lawyer, that's a lawyer issue, so. Just so council knows that that person wasn't telling you the true facts, I always tell them, go to the end of the horse with teeth and not the one with hair. Get the answer from somebody that, you know, they hired these people, it's their problem. They sent a complaint to the state, the state sent it back to them, said they weren't doing anything about it, so. Just so everybody's clear on that.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am. Joanna Moran? I'm just here to have a couple of comments on the packet that was given out today on procedure, kind of. In your consent agenda, you approved her to sleep at the park for a show that you hadn't approved yet, so technically she could've slept there without you approving a fee. Just so you guys can put that all together next week.
Yeah.
And in the minutes, um, and I know Yvonne kind of knew, but I completely agree with Jerry that these kind of vilify him. He is the only council member that there's an adjective to describe him during meeting minutes. These are permanent history of what happened at city hall. You all should look at them very carefully. Um, you're referring to things that are said, but it's not explained even what is said in some of those stuff, so when you look back in ten years, they're useless, they're useless minutes. Um, just be careful because it's not fair to Jerry. He, I mean, for him to say it's argumentative every time he speaks, you know, Miss Betcher proclaims thing, Brian asks questions, it's not fair to him, and it is obvious that you're picking him out for whatever reason. The, the final last thing is they're already signed, approved in June. That's, I don't know why you're even approving them now, they've already been signed by the clerk in the mirror. Have a good day.
Thank you.
I know you're looking at me and I wasn't gonna talk. I did wanna apologize for being upset like you was at the last meeting. Um, and after seeing the stats in the paper, it makes me scared. Your officers are on duty for sixty hours a week and they're turning around having a thousand calls in six and a half months. Essexville, and you talked, Essexville, you can check this, Dawn, um, they get about two thousand a year. And that's the same calls that Terry has, phone calls and whatever. So if we have that kind of problem, I don't want, we, uh, we circle you. So whatever happens in the city happens in the township. We've got that kind of a prime problem, we got a problem, people. And we better start looking into it a little more, 'cause if that's what we have and you are getting over twelve hundred, and I don't know how many the state police does, in six months, Essexville get, had nine hundred in some calls in the last, um, six and a half months. They have four times the population you do. And we do. So we may need to look at it. Thank you. And if there's anything we can do, maybe we need to get together and figure it out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
If I may, um, obviously Craig Bar. Um, with all due respect to Robert's Rules of Order that you were reading there, that's a nice book, it's not the law. Um, Michigan Open Meetings Acts, Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen point two six nine minutes. Each public body shall keep minutes of each meeting showing daytime place members present, members absent. Any decisions made at the meeting open to the public and the purpose or purposes for which a closed meeting is held. Uh, the important part, uh, let's see, the public body, uh, public body shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting in which the minutes refer, to which the minutes refer. The public body shall make corrected minutes available at or before the next subsequent meeting after correction. The corrected minutes shall show both the original and the correction, the original entry and the correction. That's, uh, section nine, number one. As Joanna said, minutes are public record, open to public inspection. The rest of it refers to, uh, making the minutes available. Those minutes be available for public inspection with eight, within eight business days after the meeting to which the minutes refer, which is obviously why they have to be prepared, even though they're not, uh, approved. And, uh, the public body shall make approved minutes available for public inspection within five business days after the meeting at which the minutes are approved by the public body. Yvonne told you that you had approved the minutes. Otherwise, you, it weren't legal having a meeting.
Right.
She was right.
Right, yes.
And you have not approved the minutes of last meeting. This says they must be approved, I'm, I'm trying to help you out here.
Right, I hear ya.
So if you're gonna make, make changes, you have to make it tonight and you have to approve those minutes.
Okay.
Or if you prefer, you can be in non-compliance with the open meetings act.
Right.
Which you probably don't wanna do.
All right, so. So we need to approve the minutes. Yeah, we gotta approve the minutes.
I'm, I'm making a, a motion to approve the minutes of June seventeen two thousand. Those are the minutes you're talking about?
Right. What corrections? No corrections.
Yeah, because it's already passed, we actually take out, like.
We have to approve the, we have to make the amendments to the, the minutes that, that we wanna make.
You have two things to do, you have to approve the minutes.
Yes.
You either approve them as they're written, or you make the corrections you wanna make and then approve them.
Right.
Okay, well then I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as they are written for June seventeen two thousand nineteen. To give, yeah, to him.
Okay. Do we have support for that? All right, there's no support for that, so we have to change the motion.
You can entertain a new motion?
We have to entertain a new motion.
Well, just a discussion here, what, um, exactly you want the word argument of taking all the motion?
Is that on both of them?
I'm just trying to get what you might correct.
We have, yeah, we have to change it, we wanna correct it correctly, so we have to get exactly how we want it, that's why I'm trying to.
You can leave the minutes the way it is. The point was made. We'll, we're discussing, we'll look into the future minutes of how they are presented and written as of this meeting. I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes as, as written. That's what you're asking, yes?
Okay.
Do we have support for that?
I'll support the minutes to be approved as written.
Okay, so we have a motion in support to approve the minutes as written. Um, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Saha?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Coier?
Yes.
Councilmember Betcher?
Yes.
Mayor Brazel?
No. But they are approved. Minutes are approved. Um, moving on to, does anybody else have any public comment now?
I did. Just one, real quick. Uh, just to clarify, um, on the stats there. I, I recently talked to the Essexville, uh, director of public safety who's no longer there, but, uh, to find out how they were doing their, the thing that the council needs to understand is every agency collects their data differently. If you go to the state police, the calls that I have made, you go to the sheriff's department, the calls that I collected, them are calls that include traffic stops, they include driving down the road and somebody waves you over, to ask you whatever. You stop to help somebody fix a tire, whatever, that's why we put our stats in categories. Um, it simplifies a lot of that stuff, so, um, so that doesn't, I guess what I wanted to clarify on, them are not all criminal, criminal complaints. So just so we're all clear on that.
Right, I hear you.
And like I said, I won't take advantage of that. Thank you.
Moving on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll support the motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in support to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.